We're just, um, this is the part of our main hello, everybody. 5:30 PM, we're gonna go ahead and get started with our, um, presentations and proclamations, um, for the evening. Our first presentation is for Habitat for Humanity. All right, come forth, yep.
Does this mean three minutes or longer?
I'm sorry?
Do I get more than three minutes?
Oh, yeah, you do.
Okay, I wasn't sure. I was like, I will talk super fast.
That's public comment time, but, uh, yeah, I know you got on the agenda.
All right. So I'm Chris Lewis Medina. I'm the Executive Director and CEO of Pike's Peak Habitat for Humanity, which serves all of El Paso County. And one of the first things I want to do is present City Council an award or recognition for all the work that the City of Fountain has done for us. We have built 36 homes and repaired two here in the Fountain area, and we couldn't do it without your support because you've welcomed us warmly, you have lifted up our families, and many of you have been out on the construction site. So, I don't know, Mayor, if you would like this, you want me to leave it here because of COVID or just...
Well, I think that usually goes to Ms. Sylvia because then she finds a nice, pretty place to put it, and then, um, but no, we're excited that, uh, that's happening, and we, how many years have you guys been working down here now?
So, we broke ground in Country Living in 2012. Took us quite a while to get through. Those first six homes were funded by Home Depot Foundation, so that's what gave us a big kickoff there.
Yeah, and still going strong in, and yeah, just some of the work and, and as you said, those things. And I think we've even done some things with like tap fees and things like that to, to just make it easier and cheaper and, and, um, get the most bang out of our buck for those houses, so.
You have. So, um, tap fees, including sewer and sanitation, would run anywhere from 15 to a little over 20,000, and sanitation got a grant and waived most of our, our sanitation fees for that, and yes, and you waived our tap fees, which is phenomenal. Now, how that works though is if the houses are sold to somebody that's outside of 60% to 80% of the area median income, which means they're no longer in low-income housing, then those tap fees become due back to you. So, yeah, but it has all that cash that we were able to save back, we build more houses with it.
And that's great, and that's, uh, again, it helps everybody because, as we know, all those fees and things just get passed on, but, uh, when you're struggling and you're trying to figure this whole thing out, that those little things hopefully add up, so I'm glad.
It does, it does. Um, you good for me to go with this?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, um, last month when I was here for World Habitat Day, I unexpectedly didn't, I didn't know I was gonna talk, so I threw all kinds of stats at you in about six minutes flat. Um, I wanted to go through a little bit more about what we do locally, but plus throughout the county, because we're responsible for serving all of El Paso County. So there's a number of stats here up on the screen, but what I wanted to let you know about is how did we survive the pandemic, and how are we doing, and what are we doing? So we did come through the pandemic pretty well, um, even though we had to close the construction sites. That was required not only by Public Health, but also through Habitat International, and that set us back by three houses. So we're behind three houses total by the end of June. Um, the volunteers are coming back, which is phenomenal, because we had about a year of only staff, and with only four core staff out there and no volunteers, that really slowed us down. Our core group of volunteers, which are folks that come out at least once a week for eight hours at a time, if we had the land and the money, they could build 12 houses on their own. And then we rely on those daily volunteers. So the folks that are not skilled, they wanna come out and learn, and that really pushed us back. But volunteers are coming back. Amazing support from the community, um, donations actually went up for us. Did it cover the cost, the crazy cost of the increase in construction? No, but it certainly kept us viable. So, and that included, um, CDBG funding that came through the county, and also those reduced fees from you guys, because, um, when lumber was up 600%, we weren't having to pay cash out when we were building down here because of you. So those are key things there. Um, the three homes that we're going to have to catch up on are at Micah's View and all, or at Sand Creek, and I'll show you some pictures on that. Um, the land, whoops, I'm getting ahead of myself, so let me just... So these are the six key things that I wanted you to know that we survived. Last year, we did open that second Restor. The whole reason behind a Restor, yes, it does keep items out of the landfill, and it provides a way for people to come and buy materials to affordably upgrade their own home, but it is central to us being able to build and repair homes. So the first Restor, which is on Wasatch, it opened in 2004. The second one just opened in September. That first store allowed us to double the number of homes we built. So we were building two to four, then we went up to eight, up to 11 because of that. So when that second store kicks in, and we have net income from both, we'll be able to serve more families.
Where is that second one?
Say that again?
Where is the second store?
6250 Tut, so it's off of Dublin and Tut. Here's a climbing gym, if you wanna go climb after you shop, kind of fun stuff there. Um, we did finish, uh, the Country Living Neighborhood here. That's 34 homes that we finished. I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail here. The ridge at Sand Creek is up off of Babcock and Galley, so, um, it's just, I always get, it's just west of, of Powers. Um, that's 30 homes out of a 90-home community. Micah's View, which is the one, uh, we just had two home closings on that, that's just across from Aragon Elementary, and I called it Ortega Elementary in my presentation because I grew up in Alamosa, and there it's Ortega, um, so. Yeah, and he didn't even know. Um, so we have those two of three lots there, five more to build at Jacob's Run down the road off of Race Street, and then our repair program is expanding. So repairs we're finding are predominantly for seniors and veterans of low income. It's, um, for those who are needing accessibility, they're, they're living in an unsafe home. Their flooring's bad, the roofs are bad, their utilities are literally outrageous because, um, it's not a sealed home. So repairs are expanding here. Um, it's probably better for us to actually increase the number of repairs right now until housing and construction costs even out. And then, just so you know, we survived, we're here, and, uh, volunteers are returning, come shop at the Restor, and we're looking for committee members and board members. And, you know, our office isn't that far from here, so if you, you wanna come hang out with us, please consider doing so. And this is the new Restor. It's a little over 22,000 square feet. The line of sight in it is wonderful, so it doesn't take as many staff to operate. This store, we can operate with, we're six days a week, we're about between seven and eight people. The other Restor line of sight is not good. We have about 15 staff there, and then an equal number of core volunteers that help run that, just because you can't see where your customers are. So this will help us serve more families. Now, Country Living, out of those 34 homes, I want you to know that at least one of those homes is owned by a senior with disabilities on low income, and she always wanted to own a home, and she finally got to do this. She moved in about four years ago. Another couple that's there, he had such severe health, um, issues, and they lived in a trailer where literally the, you could see the ground through their floor. There wasn't indoor plumbing that was working. He had extreme health issues. Now that he's moved into this, where he thought he might not make it for, um, more than two years, they've been in for three years, his health has improved. One of the little girls that's in, not in this picture, but is in one of our homes, where she lived in the Springs, she was constantly being flown Flight for Life because the, uh, health environment in her home triggered all kinds of seizures and lack of breathing. You have not seen one Flight for Life helicopter in that Country Living Neighborhood. She is doing well. So our families range from seniors of one to couples and predominantly, uh, families with kiddos. Uh, one family was actually living in two apartments because they had eight kids, all boys, poor mom, and, uh, the two older ones moved out, went on their own, and they're, uh, at the time, 19-year-old said, "Let's, let's do this," and he's actually a signer on the home, and so he and mom and dad and the other little kids, they all moved in. Um, all the families are doing well, stable, no defaults, so, phenomenal. So out of the, the one at Sand Creek, this was, the land was donated by a foundation that requires us to build at least five homes per year. So that's why we have got, we've pulled out from Micah's View for now and Jacob's Run, because we have to get caught up there because in agreement with the foundation. So you'll see us for a while in Colorado Springs. That does not mean we're not coming back to Fountain, we are. So we still own land here, we're still looking, but just know that it's gotta be a priority right now because of an agreement. Um, so we're closing on two homes there in October, two in December, one in probably March, so we'll be at 199 families served. So one of the homes that's right there off of Race in Illinois, the fam, uh, there's a family member there that has special needs and needs accessibility. These are extremely expensive homes to build when they need this. Um, even though they're simple, when you're putting in a concrete ramp, plus all the metal that was there, the metal alone was over $5,000. It was all donated. The concrete was also an additional $5,000. So just the ramp added a lot to this house, and then there was a need for a roll-in shower, and Ramp Parts Plumbing Supply donated that, and they donate most of the plumbing for our homes now. So, community partnership is key to us being able to serve more families. This is the family that just moved in, um, where Councilwoman Thompson came, and we originally presented the one plaque to her. You'll, you'll notice there's a garage on this home. We hadn't done that in the past here a few years ago when we had those two hailstorms back-to-back. That wipes out anybody, but when you have low income and you're having to pay for two deductibles on a house, two deductibles on cars, there's just no way you can do that. So City of Fountain folks came together, donated, and helped meet a lot of those deductibles and helped us get the repairs done ourselves. So that's why there's, it's one car garage, and, but at least that'll help a little bit on, on protecting their assets. Safety is always first. So if you haven't been out on our site, I know that you can get up on the roof safely. If you want to, you don't have to. We, uh, we do put up safety gear all the way around. That's part of what the volunteers learn to do. You'll notice that our fences have slats in them, and that's because of the winds out here. It's actually, keeps the fences from blowing down, so that saves a lot of maintenance for our families. So always looking for, for safety features, building the homes affordably, most of our homes, um, when families do not leave the windows open during the middle of the winter because the house has gotten hot, are, the utilities in the winter are about $50 a month. That's gas and electric all in. So, um, they're very solidly built, two-by-six construction even before it was required. And our board members are super committed. They come out and they actually help sponsor one and a half homes. They came together and they personally did that, and then they helped build. So, looking for board members. I know that you're gonna be potentially looking for something to do, so, you know. On the repairs that we do, we're focused on exterior repairs. There are a lot of entities that will come inside and, and do, um, trip prevention, or they'll add handrails. We're looking for those exterior pieces. So again, ramps, roofs, soffits, um, both of these homes were in need of pretty extensive repairs. The one on the left is out in Calhan. We've done quite a few homes in, in Calhan, Peyton, um, just outside of Falcon a little bit, and then down here in Fountain, and then southeast Colorado Springs. This house on the left, this is a veteran whose wife has dementia. They literally could not get out of the house safely. They kept falling because the sidewalk that he had built to try to, to get her out on her walker, um, she kept tripping, and so she was getting hurt. So all he wanted was a ramp. So we came in and we put in a new ramp, but then we realized he needed a roof. The back porch had fallen in, his kids came and scraped the porch. They did the fundraising for part of that, so we got community buy-in even from way out there. Farmers take care of one another. So lots happening there. Um, some people are like, "Oh, you know, you give your homes away, and why donate? Why come, you know, there's lots of money coming in." Well, yes and no. So on our budget, it's a $5 million budget this year, a big chunk of that is actually not cash. When we record the sale of our homes, we are actually the lender and the servicer. So we're holding the cash for those homes. So when you see a little over a million to 2 million on our sales sheet of home sales, that's not cash going out. Now, 2 million of that was grossed by the Restor, so that was just one Restor. But that Restor paid for all of our wages, helped build 50% of our homes, so when you take all of that out, the net on the Restor is usually about between 600,000, 700,000. Um, so fundraising, individual donations again went way up. We also have corporations, faith institutions that donate to us, community groups, and Restor is key to it. On our homeowner, the homeowners take great pride in this. When they are making that monthly mortgage payment, and they pay an HOA out there, they have property taxes, they're paying their insurance, and their principal payment, that principal is capped at 30% of their income when they entered the program. So if you're paying more than 30% of your income, you're cost burdened. And one in seven families in Colorado, and about one in six in El Paso County are paying more than 50% of their income, just the housing. So you can't be proactive on a whole lot when you're struggling just to have a decent place to live. So our homeowners, what they do is they pay us their principal, and that goes right back into paying and building other homes. So we call it the Fund for Humanity, and they take pride in that, and they actually like paying property taxes. How many of you can say that you like doing that? Our homeowners do. They take pride in that. So that comes in, that's about 280,000 a year that's coming in. And then building our homes, they went from 160,000 to 240,000 per home. Um, we hope that some of those costs will start stabilizing. We're not gonna see it for probably at least another year. Payroll, we had 40 staff. We did not have to lay off during the pandemic, but we are having the same issues everybody else is having. We have open positions and not enough applicants. And then we have homeowner services, where our families come together and they have their classes, estate planning, understanding their mortgage documents. There's 10 classes they have to take as part of their sweat equity, and that is, um, a very tiny program, but it's a mighty program, so, and operational expenses. So, I talked really, really fast because I've been, was here last month, but I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. Best way to learn is come volunteer with us.
I just wanna say that, that Restor, fabulous. I use it all the time. So, it's just great to know that you opened another one. So I'm gonna go check it out now.
Okay. Now, every time you shop, you're helping us build, so thank you.
Are you gonna have your women's build date?
We are. So we've moved that from once a year to once a quarter, and we'll be sending out announcements on that. Um, one of the key positions we're down on is our Construction Superintendent. He has decided to retire. He's been with Habitat, not this one, but a total of 23 years, and it's pretty hard on the body, and so I tried to talk him into a break. Um, I think he's actually means it this time, but, um, so it's dependent on can we have, can we have all those volunteers out, but the plan is March, so I'll keep you posted on that, because I know that that's how you came to us too. So, thank you.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good information.
All right.
All right, um, we'll keep plugging away. All right, um, we're gonna go ahead and move on to our next one, is a proclamation declaring that henceforth the month of October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Um, is there, are you gonna speak on this one? Do you wanna speak on this one, or?
Well, we have a representative here, uh, that, we have a flyer that everyone should have. The program is happening, uh, in the near future in Colorado Springs on Airport Row. If you would like to come up and speak on that.
All right, my name is Will Starks, and I'm one of the members of One Body and Entertainment slash KLAN, Community Cares. And this is our fourth year of doing this, um, this Breast Cancer Think Pink Honors. Um, we, we, we do three recipients that have been through breast cancer and survived it, um, and we give out plaques slash awards, uh, for the three, for the three survivors. Uh, the, the award is named after my mother-in-law who passed of breast cancer. Um, and like I said, we've been doing that for four years, and this year we have it, uh, October 23rd at the Story Church from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. And this is one of the recipients, Ms. Mercedes, uh, Jackson Moore, and, um, would you like to say something?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon, and thank you so much for allowing me a few minutes. My name is Mercedes Jackson Moore. I'm a 30-year, one-day Air Force veteran, and I have a story to tell, however it take too long today, but I just thank you in advance for supporting us. Um, this is my first year with the group, and I look forward to many, many more years. And breast cancer has no friends, it has no gender, it has everything you wanna have except for one specific person. Any of us in here could come up with breast cancer tomorrow, male and female. So thank you for your time.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Um, I actually know Ms. Burhost, Ms. Kelly. She and I taught together over at Fountain Middle School, and, and, uh, she had long, pretty long battle with it as well, and I think is doing pretty well today. So, been very excited for her, watch her journey, and the people around her that really kinda helped her get through that. So, um, I, we are happy to do this. I wanna go ahead and read the proclamation in, if that's okay, and then we'll move on from there. So a proclamation declaring that henceforth the month of October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, whereas there are an estimated 61,000 breast cancer survivors living in Colorado as of 2016, and whereas early detection could spare as many as one-third of those lives, and whereas many women are unaware that they are at risk for breast cancer and need to have regular screening mammograms in order, in accordance with nationally accepted guidelines, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the many agencies and healthcare professionals who have joined together to educate and encourage Colorado women to become aware of the risks of this devastating disease, and about the need to practice a three-step approach to breast health, which includes annual clinic, clinical breast exams, annual mammograms, and monthly self-breast exams. Now therefore be it proclaimed, that the City Council of the City of Fountain, Colorado, declares the month of October, um, 2021 is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Done this 12th day of October 2021, and I'll sign that and get that attested as well, but, um, thank you for your efforts and, and, um, uh, just kinda pushing us forward and keeping the awareness there. I think that's important with this and, and other cancers where, you know, that early detection is, is so vital for a lot of people. And, um, I was, saw on the news the other day where a lot of people have, um, because of COVID and just the fear of going out and doing those things, really let a lot of these preventative things go and, and kinda getting that back, that message back out there that, that it's still important to make sure you're doing that, I think is important. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
So he would not leave if you wanna get a picture?
Right, right.
So I'd also like to see if we can get our building, I know we have lights outside, so we can get our building lit up for this month in pink.
It's pretty close.
It's pinkish. They'll, they'll take a look at it and see what we can do. That's actually a good idea. Okay, thank you. All right, and then, um, we'll do pictures after this next one. Um, we've got a few more minutes here. Um, a proclamation proclaiming, proclaiming that henceforth the month of October is Domestic Violence Prevention Month. Um, and you said there's a representative from Tessa here?
I have a representative from Tessa here. I've talked to the chief, and from March the 1st to October the 12th of this year alone in Fountain, we've had 1,300 domestic violence calls for service. So we do have, um, a need for our Tessa services in our area, and we have our beacon team.
Hey, go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much, and thank you to the City of Fountain for recognizing this this month and for having me here. Um, as you said, Domestic Violence Awareness Month started in 1981, um, by the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence, and it was to bring advocates together across our country who were working with women and children at the time that were affected by domestic violence. In 1989, Congress passed a public law designating this as National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So today, we at Tessa ask our community to take the time during this month to recognize and stand with those survivors and be a voice for the victims in our community. We are incredibly appreciative of the City of Colorado Springs and the City of Fountain for partnering with us, our law enforcement partners that stand by us and help us to support our victims and hold our offenders accountable, and to all the community partners that work with us to be able to stand up together and say intimate partner violence is not okay. So I would challenge all of you from now going forward to be a voice for those survivors, to believe them, to listen to their stories, and to help them find a way to safety and support.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I've seen, fortunately, I've seen the work that Tessa's had to do, um, but it's been, you know, I think, um, uh, for the couple of people that I've known that have had to access some of their services, it's just, it's, uh, it's kind of a fresh breath there for them because, um, it's taken seriously, and, and I know you kinda mentioned that around, just, you know, gotta believe them and, um, you know, but, uh, I think it's, it's a worthy organization that, at least for those couple of folks, it, it really made a difference in their lives, and, and luckily the outcomes were good for them, and then they were able to keep moving forward. So, um, I'm gonna read the proclamation in real quick, and, uh, proclamation proclaiming that henceforth the month of October is Domestic Violence Prevention Month, whereas Tessa, El Paso County's local Domestic Violence Shelter and Outreach Center, provided a total of 8,756 nights of shelter to 115 new adults and 95 new children in fiscal year 2020, and approximately 1,250 calls come through the crisis line each month, and whereas 16 local organizations and government agencies receive the federal Green Book grant to collaboratively develop innovative approaches to address cultural competency and the co-occurrence of domestic violence and child maltreatment. And whereas the domestic violence and child maltreatment are not confined to any group or groups of people, but affects people of all races, economic levels, family structures, religions, ages, and sexual orientation. And whereas local professionals and community members concerned about cultural competency and the co-occurrence of domestic violence and child maltreatment implemented the Green Book Cultural Competency Organizational Self-Assessment. And whereas the Green Book Grant Partner Agencies encourage our community to embrace culture, cultural competency and the co-occurrence of domestic violence and child maltreatment as a priority to address the tragic epidemic. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Fountain do hereby proclaim support to embrace cultural competency and domestic violence and child maltreatment prevention and recognition of the Green Book Initiative, and its commitment to families, the City of Fountain hereby calls upon members of the community to join with 16 partner agencies from El Paso County to support the prevention of domestic violence and child maltreatment and the implementation of cult, of a culturally, of cultural competency organizational self-assessment, done this 12th day of October 2021. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all right, yeah, and we'll get that signed and into the right places, so.
If people don't know your phone number, I assume you're hooked up with 211, so all they have to remember is that?
Um, yes, our safeline number is 6333819.
Okay.
You can also do confidential chat, um, on our website at alltimes@tessecs.org, and that's a safe way for individuals experiencing violence to be able to chat passively without somebody knowing that they picked up the phone to call. And that's for youth and adults.
Great information, thank you.
Thank you. All right, that is it for our presentations. We have like three and a half minutes, so if you wanna do some pictures, we can do those super fast, and we'll move into our regular meeting at 6:00.
Let's do it.
When we'll get started. I miss any council member.
She said we don't have people that use purple. This is for domestic violence and breast cancer.
Do we know where Sam went? Oh, there he is. All right, as Mr. Geek works his way back, welcome. It is 6 o'clock, and we will start with our regular agenda. I'll call our October 12, 2021 City Council meeting to order, and please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ottega.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson. Councilmember Estes.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Geek.
Here.
Councilmember Duncan.
Here.
All six members present.
All right, thank you. We are going to move right on past Item 4, A and B. We have no presentations. There are board and commission committee appointments. City Council Agenda Request, item number five. I'll start with Ms. Duncan.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This Thursday, I will be participating in the virtual meeting at UCCS Economic Forum. It takes place on Thursday. It's virtual, and it's a great forum. You can go online and register. It starts at 1:00, if you'd like to attend. Also, the Founder Chamber, the Fountain Chamber Networking Breakfast is this Friday at 7:00 a.m. at Hi-Hop on 8587. And we just got through hearing from Habitat of Humanity about shortage in applicants and people working for jobs. So, the Workforce Center has a 1.8 million grant to fund short-term certification to support job seekers, workers, and students in getting the training, skills, and work experiences needed for in-demand careers. So, I just wanted to put that out there. This is a once-in-a-lifetime and time-limited opportunity. So, if you're looking to change careers or need to get certification in anything, please contact the local Workforce Center.
Is that it? Okay, Mr. Geek?
Yeah, I've got a question. I believe last year that we came up with $50,000 for Bob at, for the roads, streets, and I was wondering, are we going to be able to do anything like that this year with the budget the way it is?
Yes, last year, we did do that. We added that to the maintenance, so it increased the maintenance line from 100,000 to 150,000. So, what we can do is we'll include that when that comes back for second, and have that discussion if that would be the direction from council. But, we did do that last year.
It was actually 250,000. 50,000 was to be spent on the study, which is being done.
Yeah, two separate. We did 50 to the maintenance, and then we did another 200 to the pavement study, which will be, is right now being done, and will be completed January, February timeframe. But, we did put a specific 50 to the maintenance for roads.
Okay, is that it? Okay, Mr. Applegate?
I got nothing tonight.
All right, Ms. Estes?
Just one quick thing. I've been asked to participate and be one of our representatives for the City of Fountain on the National Local Community Feedback Group on the next round of PFOS testing. And so, that will be happening with the other communities that are going, undergoing the next round of studies, and so that happens in December.
What does that involve?
It's just the wanting community feedback.
Oh, okay.
And it's true, though, what is it, ATSDR program, and they're wanting the communities that are affected by the PFOS to have community voice, and they only selected so many from each area to participate.
Okay. All right, Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, I had an opportunity right after our last council member to represent Fountain at the Resource Exchange Town Hall Meeting that they have annually, and I got the nicest note because I was really excited to share a lot of the things that is going on in Fountain within ADA accessibility, and our Beacon Program, and our Home Safe Program, and different things. And I actually had somebody come up to me after the meeting and say, wow, I need to move to Fountain, because they were really excited about everything we're doing. So, I just wanted to read this nice note I got from them, because I believe it complements our entire staff, because that's what we're talking about, is what the staff is doing down here. So, it says, "What a pleasure to have you participate in our 15th Annual Town Hall Meeting. Fountain is certainly, thought I could do it, certainly demonstrating strong action and support of people with disabilities, and your participation really supported our discussions on their needs." So, thank you to staff and everything that's going on in our community to make our parks more ADA accessible. Rosa, our ADA coordinator on staff, with the support of Scott and everybody for that. It just is affecting everything going on in our city. So, compliments and hats off to the staff for everything going on. It is being noticed out there. So, thank you very much, and that was a really fun thing to do. And I want to let everybody on council know, on October 15, PPACG is having a legislative roundtable at 2:30 to 4:00 up at C-21 Library, if you'd like to come. We do have several state representatives and senators that have RSVP'd for that. They will be speaking to the five things that PPACG covers: transportation, water, JLU's, military, and a couple of their things. And this is your chance to see what bills they're thinking about running that apply to those areas, ask questions, and if you have something where you're really passionate about, it's just an event to see what's going on. So, everybody is more than welcome to come. That's, so again, October 15, Legislative Roundtable, 2:30 at C-21, unless they change their library hours again, which hopefully they won't be doing. So, I'm sorry, that is C-21, is that the name of it? 21C? 21C, the library that's up by Chapel Hills Mall?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, all right, and that is pretty much it tonight.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I got, I got a, I got sent a question today, and I shared it with Todd and Scott, from Mr. Sam Fortune, who lives on, is it Darnell? On Darnell, they're the area where they are, they've been dealing with the water and coming out of the ground. So, he just wanted a status update, and then also wanted to speak to someone about the business licenses and inspections and things for food trucks, as he does have one. So, I just want to get that on record, because he did reach out, and I want to make sure that, and he wanted to be here tonight, but he couldn't. But, I know Todd said he would reach out to him and kind of go over those things. Any update on the Darnell thing that you could share tonight?
With the ARPA monies, we have now taken in here the engineering side of things. And right now, we're working with Troy just on the legality of connecting to those homes, so those sump pumps aren't pumping out into our infrastructure any longer. So, it's a good timing, of course. So, at 800,000, we're engineering what the fix for our infrastructure's going to be. Then, what we'll do is we'll go out, once we get the answers to that, Troy's comfortable with the legal side of how we can get connected to those six homes and impacts. I'll go out and we'll set up individual meetings with those six homeowners, and walk through that process individually with them.
Okay, great.
So, I'm hoping to get that done last quarter of this year.
Wonderful. Okay, good. I'm sure they'll be excited to hear that. Okay, thank you. I have nothing else tonight. I do want to remind everyone, November and December, meetings were moved, second meetings have been moved up a week due to the holidays, and that's kind of a normal thing that happens every year. So, just as a reminder, if you're planning your Tuesday nights, going to move on to public to be heard, citizens may address the council on items that are not on our agenda. We insist, our council may not be able to provide a meeting answer via direct staff to follow up. And out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. I have no cards tonight. Okay, anybody would like to come up?
Gordon Rick, I want to thank Mr. Trainer and the city staff. The Colorado Secretary of State is sponsoring a website called Ballot Tracks. You can go onto the site, enter your information, and they will send you either a text message or an email when your ballot has been mailed, when your ballot is received, and your ballot is counted. I think it's important that we get everybody to have confidence in our election system. Mr. Trainer and staff got that link put up on the city website, so you can go directly there and sign up for the information. So, thanks to the city staff.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on. Oh, please come forward. And state your name for the agenda.
My name, Rick Wall, last name W-A-H-L. In our neighborhood, we have one house that is the site of persistent mayhem. The police, I think, have visited this house more than 100 times. People from this house have stolen plants from our gardens. They've wrecked things that we have put up in our neighborhood. They've set fires, or some people in that house have set fires. And there's dozens of anecdotal reports that the police are pretty much aware of, and they have acted upon them, and then had the miscreants promptly released from custody or jail. My question is, I have heard a rumor that there may exist an ordinance or a statue which has a name, something like Persistent Nuisance House, and I wonder if first, I remember that word correctly, or two, I'm completely misled. Many neighbors are frustrated about continual police action, which is just essentially a revolving door. And we wondered if there, if this so-called persistent nuisance statue, if it actually exists, could it be applied to this problem? And with that, I will sit down.
Okay, I couldn't tell you that. I'm looking illegal. Oh, or Todd?
Yes, Mr. Wall, I want to make sure we're talking about the same location. You live in Higay, that was it?
Correct.
That's correct, okay. So, just to kind of give you an update on that.
We actually had a couple of debrief sessions on that today. We met with our code enforcement, as well as our police department, as you stated, is fully involved in this. You know they had an incident out there this weekend. So, so that you know, we're going to not only research that code, if it actually exists. None of us are familiar with that code, but we're going to double-check that to make sure. I can tell you, there is a public nuisance statute that's out there. So, our police department's looking at that and doing everything they can to bring that to bear. That's through the district attorney's office. So, what I can do is give you my card, so that you and I can stay in contact. I also was at the Highgate HOA meeting, I think, last month or the month before, and we had a long discussion about it. So, just so you know, this is something that we're very focused on as well. So, we're going to bring everything to bear that we can to take care of those issues for you all out there. But, we're not from, that doesn't ring true, or at least on any of our minds. Troy, are you familiar with that?
I'm not, at least in our city codes. And so, our, you know, code enforcement and the police department enforce our city ordinances, and so that's not familiar to me under our city ordinances, but there may exist some state statutes, and that's what the district attorney for the county prosecutes. And so, I think we're looking at all those avenues. So, I don't know those as quite as well as our cities. So, there might be something there that we can look at, but I think, like Todd said, we're, code enforcement and the police are doing just about everything we can do, and looking for whatever we can. I think we're certainly aware of the problem.
And so that you know, we agree with you. What's going on out there is totally unreasonable. And so you know, we'll bring everything we can legally to bear, but because we have to stay in those parameters, it's, I like to say, these issues are a marathon, not a sprint. And as you said, we've been running on this marathon together for quite some time, and we're going to keep going. So, I'm going to give you my card. Let's keep in touch, and we're going to keep working on it.
Your words are clearer than my muddled thoughts.
Clearly not muddled, though. Thank you, yeah. And, you know, unfortunately, I empathize with you, and we always get those one neighbors that just want to push every button the wrong way, and fortunately, it sounds like this one's even worse than that typical. So, okay, well, hopefully, we can make, we can use all of our resources to get that taken care of.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Lois Landgraf, and Councilmember Thompson kind of beat me to what I was going to say today, this evening, but I'm a member of the Resource Exchange Board. The Resource Exchange is an organization that provides, provides services to people with developmental and developmental disabilities, from babies to adults. And we recently did have our legislative town hall, and Resource Exchange does provide services to people from El Paso County, but also other counties. And Ms. Thompson was the one member who came from out of Colorado Springs. And I have to say, and I want to thank the staff, I know that she spent a great amount of time preparing, and it definitely showed. I think the other members of the board were probably envious of the information that she was able to provide. And I do agree, there were many comments about, because these are people who have children and family members with disabilities, and when they heard what is going on in Fountain, you may have a large influx of people heading your direction, because you've done such a fabulous job. So, thank you to your ADA director and all the staff that got Sharon up to speed on everything that's going on, a lot of which I've heard over the years. So, thank you for all that you've done. And I'm especially, I think because of her, I'm now on the Parks Board, and my mission is to make sure that all of the parks are ADA accessible, like you've done here. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Yeah, oh yeah, thank you. We, I've, as a special education teacher, worked a lot with Resource Exchange, and that was the first thing when I had a new family, is you need to get on the list, because they can, and a lot of people thought, well, it's just for my kid when they're adults. And it's like, no, you can get services starting today, and you need to get on there. And so...
Sometimes you have to be on the list from childhood to adult. It's not that long of a list.
Yeah, right, yeah. And that was the one reason, because in elementary school, I'm like, you need to get on that list, because by the time they get there, yeah. So, all right, thank you. Okay, all right. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to our consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be approved with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member or citizen requests, in which case, item may be removed and considered separately at the discretion of the council. We have items A, B, C, D, E, and F. Yep, Ms. Estes?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, and Mr. Applegate?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Please vote. Oh, don't vote.
Let's try again.
You want us to vote now?
Yes.
Okay, vote now. There it goes. It's working.
Six yes, motion carries.
All right, thank you. Okay.
It always throws me when I see Greg's.
Item 8, Old Business 8A, second reading of ordinance number 1767, and ordinance annexing to the City of Fountain, the area to be known as Mark Schuffel Road, annexed... annexation located north of the intersection of Mark Shuffle Road and Furlong Circle and south of intersection of Mark Shuffle Road and Peaceful Valley Road, and here and after, more specifically described in exhibit A. Ms. Martinez?
Good evening, Kristi Martinez with the Planning Department. This is the second reading of ordinance 1767, annexing about approximately 12 acres of Mark Shuffle Road from Furlong Circle north, uh, to Peaceful Valley, and there's been no changes to the ordinance since first reading.
Okay, um, no changes on second, or first reading. Uh, unless there's any questions, what would council like to do? Mr. Applegate?
I, I make a motion to approve ordinance 1767 on second reading.
All right, Ms. Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
Okay, um, and then item eight B, second reading of ordinance number 1768, and ordinance of the city of Fountain, Colorado, approving the refinancing of its utility revenue bond, series 2013, for the purpose of decreasing debt service expenses over the remaining term of the bond debt, and for paying the cost of the refinancing, and providing details and documents in connection with the bonds. Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor, uh, Council. Good evening. John Lewis, Finance Director. A- as many of you know, uh, the last few years, people have been refinancing their homes because interest rates have gone, uh, down, they're lower, and so it's advantageous to refinance. So, uh, there are certain rules within the state of Colorado that govern, uh, how a municipality can refinance its bonds, but because interest rates are lower, uh, we have been able to refinance the 2011 bonds, and now we're asking to refinance the 2013 bonds at a lower interest rate. So, um, uh, this is the second reading of ordinance 1768. We would like your approval to go ahead and refinance those bonds. Um, it will save approximately, um, fifty thousand to fifty-five thousand dollars per year in the water fund, and it will not extend the loan or increase the, uh, the amount that we have to pay. So with that, I would ask for your approval.
Okay, um, and if, if, uh, so this is second reading, and if there aren't any questions, what would council like to do? And Mr. Applegate?
I move to approve on second reading ordinance 1768.
And Ms. Thompson? Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you, Council. Yep, uh, we're gonna move on to item nine, new business. Nothing was taken off of consent. Item nine B, I'm opening a public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 1769, setting appropriations for the funds, offices, and departments of the city of Fountain, Colorado, for the fiscal year 2022, beginning January 1, 2022, or 2022, or next year. Mr. Lewis, go ahead.
Um, again, thank you, Mayor, Council. John Lewis, Finance Director. Uh, this is the first reading of our 2022 budget. Um, it's part of the two-year 2021 and 2022 biennial budget. Uh, after two work sessions with city council on, uh, June 8th and September 14th, um, related to this budget, and many meetings with staff, and, and again, a, um, a, um, the numbers were, have been presented, uh, to, to council. Nothing has changed from that initial presentation. Um, this is the first reading, so any revisions that you would like to see, we will make before the, uh, second and final hearing, uh, which will be in about two weeks. So, um, we do have revenues and departmental expenditures by fund, and, uh, so, uh, we have listed that here, and, and in an order where, uh, the left-hand column that you see is the, uh, proposed budget in this first reading. Any adjustments that you'd like to see, uh, and we do have one to suggest, uh, but any adjustment you'd like to see, we will put in here, uh, and then come back to you with the adjustments column completed, and the final budget to the right, uh, also completed. So in the general fund, total revenues of 28 million 542, and expenses of 27 million 890 for 652,000 approximate, uh, revenue over expenditures. Uh, all of the, uh, funds have, are balanced in that, uh, there is enough revenue to cover the expenditures, uh, and, and where there may not be, as in some of the miscellaneous funds, we have enough reserves and revenue to cover those expenditures. So, um, the, uh, again, the, the water fund, uh, has approximately 12 million 400,000 of revenue, 11 million of expenditures for, um, revenue of 1.3 million over expenditures. Electric fund, 28 million 874, and, uh, revenues of 27 million 591. So their revenue is 1.2 million, almost 1.3 million, over the expenditures. And then we have all the other funds listed here with the forecasted revenue, um, a total of 58 million 496 111, proposed expenses of 58 million 277 796. So, uh, an additional 218,000 315 will be transferred to reserves. Now, the, the one thing we would like to add is back in the general fund, uh, as, and this has been brought up tonight several times, the beacon unit has been very successful. Um, folks are real happy with it. The, uh, police department, um, would like to expand it. Uh, we have received a one-year grant to fully fund an additional, uh, individual, and, uh, that grant is $100,000. So the adjustment that we would make would be to increase revenue $100,000 for 2022, and then have the additional beacon unit cost of $100,000. So the net of revenue over expenditures will, will stay the same, but we have a, a really good, um, really good news that, um, we have, uh, an organization that will fully fund it. And if there's any other questions about that, I know Commander Lewis would be happy to discuss them.
No, it really, it gives us a year to get our act together and make sure we can fund that in perpetuity, is what it sounds like, right?
Right.
Okay, cool. That's exciting.
So are there any questions regarding the budget, or?
Oh.
Uh, any, uh, adjustments that you would like staff to consider adding to this? And, uh, prior to approval of the first reading?
Oh, okay, um, uh, Mr. Geek?
Well, I guess my question is that, that $50,000 for the streets, is this where we would put this in, or?
If, if you want another 50,000 for the streets, yes.
So.
Do what we did last year.
So we have, we have to add that again, or that just didn't become part of? Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, if you want to add an additional, uh, 50,000, we, we could add that here.
But is the 50,000 there from last year that we added? Does that make sense? Okay.
Just a one time.
Okay.
One time.
Yeah.
Mayor, I think last year we took it out of reserves, if I, I think that whole 250 came out of reserves.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Okay. Okay, and, uh, so you just want to basically continue that?
Just, I mean, he did quite a bit of things this last year, and I'm pretty happy with what he was able to do with that 50,000 dollars.
Right, okay. Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't have any heartache about that, I don't know. Um, I know people really want to see the roads just progress, and 50,000 is a drop in the bucket, but it's something, and, um, and it'll get used, and, and you know, the, the great thing about Bob is he's gonna, he's gonna turn that 50,000, a whole lot more. Um, and so people will see actual results. Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, I concur with, uh, Councilmember Geek. I think that's a good thing to add that 50,000 dollars in when we, you know, have a chance to do it. Can you go back to the reserve, the 650,000 that you said we're gonna have?
651,894 in the general fund.
Could you scroll to that, please?
Sure.
So that's 651,000 dollars, it's, um, above, that is not designated for something, minus the 50,000 we just took out of it, right?
That's correct.
Okay, now, when I met with you, you indicated that that number could potentially be higher af- of, that we put back in, um, the budget into reserves after all the different departments come back by the end of the year, that number could be higher.
Yeah, it, it, that's correct. Well, not this number wouldn't be higher, but the, um, the fund balance that we have in the general fund could be higher than, than what it is now. And right, right now, and I can, I can go to that, uh, pretty quickly. Thanks to our digital budget here. So, uh, what we have projected for 2022, including this 651,000, is that by the end of 2022, we would have 14 million 229 336, a- all the way over on the right-hand column here, in the general fund. But, um, the reserves, the 20% reserve that is a policy that you have set, that you'd like to, to keep in there, uh, has to do with the total of the 3%, the approximate 3% of the Tabor, plus the unassigned funds. So it doesn't include what's been assigned to public safety, or, uh, committed to park improvements, et cetera. So, so that number is 5 million 960 810. And at the end of 2021, you are correct, um, we usually end up with less expenditures than what we have budgeted, and that number could be higher. That could go higher, and we'll know probably by March or April of 2022. Uh, but i- if, if that doesn't go higher, the fact is, we now have, as of, um, uh, the end of 2021, it looks like we'll have about 1.8% above that 20%. And by 2022, 21.9%, so 1.9%. And those equate to approximately 500,000 of reserves over the 20% limit that you would like to see it kept at.
Thank you. The reason I asked you to explain that really specifically is because, um, you know, we have citizens that have been, um, you know, wanting a lot of stuff done besides roads, right? And, um, so I have a proposal I would like Fountain, uh, the council to think about. Um, my suggestion is that we take 500,000, that 500,000 dollars, it's above the 20%, make it a line item in the budget for an aquatic facility. We leave that money in that line item, aquatic facility, or whatever you decide to call it, for two years, and it can only be used for building construction for an aquatic facility, not towards a study, not towards anything else. It would be our buy-in for an aquatic facility. All citizens would have access to this, and that equates to about 1650 per person investing it, based on dividing it by 30,000 people. That is the estimated census of the city. Um, you can't borrow from the fund, somebody else can't borrow from it, but we would set that money aside. It wouldn't necessarily be spent, but that gives staff two years to talk with some other nonprofits that are with, around the area, and see if we can come up with a way to have an aquatic facility in the city of Fountain. Um, the citizens want it, they've been asking for it, and we need to come up with a creative way to do it. This would show the seriousness of the city that we're committed to working with other nonprofits for a couple of years to get it done. If at the end of the two years, it's not done, we haven't made any progress on it, then the money just goes back into the general, into the reserve fund, and it, you know, but it's not moved, but it is set aside to show the seriousness that we're committed to making this happen. Um, it's not, like I said, it's not gonna be spent, it, unless we come up, Sylvia? With a way for that facility to happen. I know it's gonna cost a lot more than 500,000 dollars, but I think this would just be a good way of showing confidence that we, this is a priority to us, um, as a council and as a city.
Sure, so we would set up a committed line item in the fund balance?
Yes.
Moving 500,000 to committed to potential pool, or?
For two years.
Right.
For two years, and after two years?
So you'd have 500,000 each year for two years?
No, 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 no. I wish.
So, okay, so we, we put it, we, we'd keep it in the fund balance, but it'd be moved to a committed, uh, line, similar to park improvements and, uh, school zone?
Correct, yeah. And that would be my, and, and so, um, you know, because we need to, we need to figure out a way to make this happen, and I think this would show the nonprofits that you're trying to work with, that the city is making a, a monetary commitment to this, um, if we can figure out a way to make it happen. And, um, it may get spent, it may just, you know, it may sit there. Hopefully it will get spent. And if at the end of two years, there's no progress made on it, like I said, it goes back into the, um, into the reserves again. Um, if they're six months away from breaking ground, then that council at that time can obviously, you know, choose to extend it, and for another year to make sure it's going on. But, um, I just, I think that's, um, something we need to do, and it's not gonna change the, get us below the 20%. We're still gonna be at the 20%, and then with Councilmember Geek, that's been something we've been very concerned about with our time on council. So, um, would anybody like me to re, say it again, the suggestion, 'cause I know it's a little complicated?
I get it, I, I get concerned with just holding that 500,000 in the hopes of something when our strategic priorities are really, um, what should be driving those discussions and where we're moving. Um, as my understanding with that 500,000, the extra, which is about 500,000, it would be, um, we could use that money in grant matching for a lot of other projects as well. Um, and so I would just be concerned with putting 500,000 away and just sitting on it, and, and the hopes of something going. We've, this discussion, and, and, and I, I like the idea, um, makes, it's kind of an outside-the-box thinking, which is what we need. Um, but I think just restrict it to not being used, um, I think really, it, it kind of pigeonholes us. I don't know if that's the right word I'm looking for, um, but, you know, trying to, um, leverage those monies other places when, when we, like, in those places where we have actual need right now, um, that's, that we could see viable solutions to things like roads, or, you know, the water issue that we're dealing with, and, and the building of that, um, infrastructure that we need. And so, um, I think definitely worth the talk. I don't, I don't know if I'm comfortable with, that's a lot to ask, to, to hold it for two years. Um, it's just my opinion, but, uh, um, I don't know if anybody else has any opinions on that. I, it's kind of neat that we actually have something left over above our fund, our reserves at the 20%. I don't know, it's been a while since it's been like that, so, um, oh, I kind of like.
You know, and this is where it gets tough, because I am a big proponent of the, of the pool idea as well. One thing, uh, I have mentioned it to council in the past, is that we do have an opportunity on a PPACG grant that's coming through PPACG, federal highway grant, to rebuild Link Road. And to do that, we are going to have to commit, um, uh, I don't have it memorized, but I believe it was about 380,000 in 2022, um, to move forward with that grant. And that will bring us in, um, depending on that's, the type of rebuild that we do for Link Road, anywhere between about four and a half million and nine million. So that is something that we'll have to look at committing to, um, with these type of discretionary funds, 'cause we don't have anything else, of course, sitting in the roads. So I just want to throw out there, just to give you some different things to think about. Um, I'm also a big proponent on working on the, on the pool side of things, as, as Sylvia knows, we're gonna make sure we do as well, but I wanted to make sure that, uh, that was out there for some thought as well.
There aren't, I don't know where discussions are with the pool, if?
We currently are having discussions, um, with the YMCA right now, to see what that looks like on their site, maybe operationally through the YMCA, um, but, uh, the funding to be helped with the city and with other nonprofit or foundations.
Yeah, the concern is, when you go to these nonprofits and other foundations, one of the questions they ask is, how much money is the city willing to set aside to commit to this? And the answer we've always had to this point is, there's nothing set aside for it. And so they get to the point of they're wondering how serious of you, are you, uh, to get this done? So I'm just, like you said, it's out of the box. Um, you know, I, I did talk to some staff members and said, you know, talk to John first. Obviously, I'm the finance person, right? Where is this gonna cost? Where it's gonna come from? Wanted to make sure we weren't going below the 20%, so that, you know, people weren't comfortable with that. When you said that number could change by the end of the year. When you said that number could change by the end of the year, it could go up a little bit, you know, that also made me a little bit more comfortable with proposing the idea. Um, and I know it's a huge amount of money, um, so maybe we discuss a little bit less out of it, that maybe people are comfortable with, but, um, that was the place where I really felt like I wanted to, to start and open the discussion with.
And anybody else, um, oh, Ms. Duncan, I'm sorry.
Yes, I, so I agree, um, with the money issue. I think that's a large amount of money with, uh, other issues that we have, that should be taken precedence right now. Uh, we do have, uh, we just, uh, approved for another position where we have a, we will have a full-time grant writer, am I correct? And so, you know, I think, you know, when we were having discussions about, uh, the facility, that we didn't have a viable team that could come up with a plan that met the needs of Fountain, you know, that were measurable for Fountain. So I think we have to start at that point, once you think that we should start at that point, get a team together that can get, that can get, um, something measurable for Fountain. You know, we do have plans for, I'm just concerned about the money issue. I think that's, uh, a lot of money. You know, I'm all for getting something for our youth, and, uh, you know, getting, uh, you know, I have a child in this community, and we're always looking for something to do. I'm just concerned about the money issue, and holding on to that type of money for that long period of time.
How, um, the other part of that is the Beacon Unit person after this first year, that's being funded through, is it Centura Health? Who is it?
UC Health.
UC, UC.
UC Health?
Yeah.
Um, so after that year?
Yeah, 100,000 the first year, so 100,000 plus, you know, what any cost of living or other increases would be.
Right. And that will need to be accounted for in future budgets as well.
Right.
Um, I, you know, I think it's, again, I think it's a worthy idea, and, uh, you know, we're in the middle of that strategic plan process, I think. Um, that's a lot to commit on this next council as well, um, to just sit on 500,000. And again, you know, I, I have my own opinions around the pool, and, and what, um, the last 30 years of, of people talking about a pool, and, um, you know, where that's going to go. Um, you know, we've had a lot of people that have invested a lot of time to try to figure this thing out, and, and just doesn't seem to take a lot of ground. I think we have a small portion of people who like the idea, um, a small portion of people who are very passionate about the idea. Um, I don't know. I, I just really hesitate with 500,000 to, to sit on for two years, where we don't, where we're not allowed to touch that money when we could be using it for, um, other things that, that are priorities right now. And I think our strategic priorities need to really drive that conversation as well, and where we're going with, um, those priorities, and what they're going to look like in this next cycle of the strategic plan as well. And I know John's meeting with folks, um, to kind of get that next portion that we're going to talk about as a council and, and community as well as we move forward. I think, so I don't know what, what needs to happen on that part. It is a public hearing, I think you want to get up. Is that true?
No.
Is your hand up, or no?
Yeah.
And if you do, you'll have to come up, but, yeah, just hold on one second, and I'll, and we'll, I'll call you up. So, um, hold on a second, yep. So, I don't know, is that, I don't know how we do that, as far as...
Well, I, I believe, and Sylvia, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it would be committed by a resolution, and could be uncommitted by a resolution at a later date, but, you know, of course, the uncommitting would not be as popular as, you know, setting it up initially, um, because, you know, it might appear to-
Has this ever been done with anything else?
I'm sorry?
Has this been done with anything else, where we sit on money, in the hopes of something occurring?
Well, we've committed money to park improvements, and we sit on that until we spend it on skate park, or, or other things. We, we've, uh, assigned money to public safety, and we kept it there until we were able to use that money to buy a, um, a, a fire ladder truck. Um, we, we committed some money to a traffic signal that we've since spent on the traffic signal, once that finally came to pass. So yes, we've, we've done that before.
But it was an obtainable goal, right?
Well, the, the, uh, traffic signal was, um, park improvements, I don't know if the money, when it was set aside before I was here, whether that was initially set aside for skate park, or, or just some improvements, and depending on what the parks committee wanted to do.
It wasn't specific, as far as a, a park improvement. It wasn't specific, for example, for a pool or new play structure, but we've, we've been able to accumulate, um, funding to be able to do the skate park, and to do the pump track, and things like that.
Okay, so as a, as our parks person, where, what do you think about this idea?
Um, I think there is a value in, in commitment of funds. I think that, um, because we would be doing it by resolution, instead of committing and then uncommitting those funds, if council would maybe consider, because 500,000 is quite a bit, in my opinion as well, but if they would consider maybe a lower dollar amount, and then have some contingencies within that resolution, should council decide at a later date that there's something else that takes much more priority, then they have the ability to back that out. I do think that working with other organizations like the YMCA and foundations, to be able to, um, pay for this aquatic, uh, facility is critical, and having some in our pocket would be helpful. But I don't know that necessarily that large of amount is, is needed to show true commitment.
250,000, then in two years, we'd have the five. If we went 250, then in two years, we'd have the five. And then we'd know if we needed to go further too, to add some more to that for another year or so.
So you're saying 250 a year?
Yeah, she says we need to maybe do a little less money.
That's one way too, I mean, to build on it. Um, it, I know, for me, it's just, it's a lot.
It absolutely is a lot of money. It absolutely is a lot of money. I, I totally agree. But the estimated cost of the facility is several million dollars too, so that's why you're gonna, I kind of, you kind of got to balance what really shows commitment to the process of it being done. Um, and I'm perfectly happy to, like I said, commit, talk about a different number, talk about a different length of time, whatever you'd, um, like to discuss, but, um, I, and, um, I've talked to a lot of people lately, and there's just a lot of people who are concerned that, you know, their kids want something to do, the youth want something to do, the seniors want something to do, there's possibility of maybe Fort Carson even, you know, wanting to use it for some of their services. And, um, you know, I grew up going to a public community pool, I learned to swim, it was very important to my mom that her kids learned to swim, because she grew up, and they thought polio was passed through water, so they never learned to swim, and she committed to her kids learning to swim, and her grandkids, and, and pool safety, water safety is, is just very important. And, um, so yeah, I'm willing to discuss different numbers, that's, that's fine.
Okay, I'm gonna, uh, is that anything else as far, let me go ahead and ask, let questions come up. If it's specifically about this, please come up, um, and then we'll kind of wrap up the rest of that conversation after, if that makes sense.
Hi.
And state your name for the record.
My name is Sandra Black. I'm a licensed family childcare provider here in Fountain, and, um, so I have a lot of, uh, contact with young children. I believe that this pool is a wonderful idea, this aquatic center. I have two teenagers that are looking for jobs, it would be a great job opportunity for them, it would get them off the street. I grew up in the pool during the summertime, the pool, Aquatics Center, was my babysitter. You know, obviously, that was in the 70s, 80s, but, um, I think it's a great opportunity, it's a great idea to reduce the number to 250,000 instead of 500,000 over two years. But I don't think that that should be put on the backburner, uh, backburner for another 30 years. It should happen. And I believe that if we don't put the reserves aside now, it's not going to happen, it, it's not going to be attainable if we don't start somewhere, so.
Right.
And yeah, that's what I believe. Thanks for listening.
All right, thanks, Mr. Curl.
Christopher Curl, I sit on the Park and Advisory Board already. Uh, we have talked since I've been on the board, and me and Sylvia have talked numerous times, and we saw the Recreation Center that we were trying to go through, and we did a study, and I don't remember how much the study cost, to get that done. And we've gone through, and it was going to have fields and all kinds of stuff on it, soccer fields, gyms, and stuff. However, to fund, putting 500,000 back for two years, you got to turn around and come up with a mill levy to help support and build, to, to, to pay for that some other way, not just by grants. You're going to have to do it. We didn't do the mill levy for the, before, earlier, because of COVID. It was, we were looking at, trying to see if that was going to be a possibility, and the people of Fountain right now don't normally approve that stuff, so when you put 500,000 back, and that's a lot of money, when there's other things in this city that's more important, okay? Because we have already provided skate park, we're building a second skate park, we got a pump track, we added two volleyball courts with sand with lights, we put lights on Fountain Mesa, we put lights on Alga. We've also improved our park and rec classes for our kids to play summer sports all summer, and I'm going to tell you right now, it's paying off. Junior high just had 53 girls show up for the junior high soccer team, which is normally not the case. They can't even get enough to field one team, now they got three teams. Because of the way we have improved our park and rec, and what we've done through the advisory committee, we have improved it across the board, and we've given this community a lot of stuff, and a lot more stuff for our children. The problem is, when you put 500,000 out there, you've just turned around and you've just put it back out of the way. We have more important things, we're talking roads, we're talking about link getting refixed, there's things that we could use that money for now, that's more important than a, Aquatics Center that we know probably in two years, even if we go get loans, we, if we don't come up with the rest of the financing, we're not going to build it in two years, three years, until we can figure out how we're going to afford to pay for it. I don't think it's the right place to put 500,000. Maybe a lesser amount, but I don't think it's the right place to put 500,000, when we're already improving our, our city with our Park and Recs Department, who's done a great job of coming up with a lot of inventive ways to make us better and our community better, and improved our, our baseball fields and everything else. So I don't think 500,000 at one point is a good place to put it for two years.
Okay.
I'd like to make a quick comment.
Go ahead.
In no way am I proposing a bond measure or anything else to pay for the rest of-
No, and that's not what he's saying.
Okay, I want to make, but on the record, it kind of sounds that way. So, um, I respectfully just want to make sure that, that, um, you know, Sylvia, I have not proposed that at all. I, I'm talking about nonprofits in different places coming up, and helping us with the rest of the money, and we would not be doing the maintenance and the upkeep on the pool, because that's where the, you lose all your money on your pool, is the constant. So it has to be where somebody else steps forward. This is just for us to show a commitment that, you know, we're interested, that we need this in our community.
Yeah, I, and, I get it, and I, you know, with this, well, any amount of money, honestly, I think, um, the other part of it, and I'm looking straight at it, is our strategic plan, and, and what that, and how that drives where we spend the money. Um, if a pool rises at the top, um, of that plan, for our next plan that we're working on currently right now, um, I think that would make it easier for, well, whatever council's on at the time, to, to make that commitment of, of any dollar amount. But when we kind of go outside of, with the strategic plan, or where, where we're trying to drive this discussion of where we're going, I think, um, we're kind of jumping the gun, and skirting that plan, and, and what is supposed to be driving us as we make our decisions, moving forward, and, and what we do, and, and, um, where we spend the money, and, and, um, plan for our budget, if that makes sense. And so, uh, you know, personally, for me, I, I really want to let that strategic plan play out. If that council decides, you know what, this is a great idea, we want to go that way, then I think we do that, um, or they can do that, um, at that point, but, uh...
Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, just thinking about, you know, the out-of-the-box thinking, listening to this discussion, and, and, uh, thinking about the strategic plan, I mean, I wish, right now, with where we're at in the progress of the next strategic cycle, we kind of, we could use that information to inform a decision tonight, but I don't think we're, we're there yet. I wonder if there's a way to set that money aside, or table the discussion until we get to the point where the new strategy can inform such a decision. And I've talked with a couple of council members about this already, the, the priority language, we're, we are coordinating that right now, but, as you know, those priorities are going to be supported by specific objectives under each priority. And this iteration, one of the things we are talking about doing as well, is comparing the objectives to each other. And as we develop strategic objectives, new objectives that support multiple priorities will hold a higher weight than strategic objectives that maybe just support one or two. So I actually think, in the strategic planning process, we will get to a point where we will have a lot of defined information that the staff has done, that come back, come back to council and say, this, these items are what in our analysis have risen to the top as the best way that we can support the strategic priorities that City Council are, are setting. So I, I just wonder if there's a way to kind of table the conversation, um, about the commitment of these types of funds until we, till we get to that point, which I think is going to be in, you know, the next 60 days. Correct. And that's, you know, with where we do our very best to synchronize the budget cycle with the strategic planning cycle, this is one of those instances where it shows that it, you know, it's, it's a little off. But I, I don't think that, that doesn't mean that there aren't some options, if we just, again, think outside the box, of kind of how, how can we bring it into alignment in this case.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
To John's point, that money's going to be there, right?
Yes.
So if the new council, a month, two months, three months, can say, we would like to have a resolution to do what you're saying, is there a problem with that?
Yeah, sure, as part of the supplemental process, and, yeah.
So I don't see why it has to be done-
That's true. We'll come out of the same pool anyhow.
And, you know, I, that's just my, I, I worked on this pool, the Recreation Center, for a really long time. I am 100% in support of it, but, there's a lot of money, we have a lot of things that are going on in this city right now, that we may need that money for. That's my only concern. And, you know, you talk about a pool, we're talking about an aquatic pool, we're talking about a big building, we're talking one that's outside, because an outside pool in Colorado, as far as I'm concerned.
Mm-mm.
Why?
No. Why not?
Really? A hot tub?
You like those polar bear people.
But that's my, my only concern.
Well, I think in that process, there, you're in the process of doing a survey right now, to kind of see what the community interest is, right?
Correct.
And, and as far as amenities in it, yeah.
Right. And we actually have some renderings, um, that the team from the YMCA has put together to include, um, kind of the initial vision, uh, from the study that we did, um, that there's been some changes to it, to include, for example, a therapy pool, um, for those with disabilities, and also, um, our military group, so, and senior citizens of the community can use that as well. So they've put together kind of a concept, um, but we haven't gotten too much further than that.
And that's where I'm at.
Just a proposal.
Yeah.
Just a, just an idea to keep on the forefront-
Ms. Duncan, is your lights on again?
No.
No, okay. Did you have something?
Yeah, I would recommend that, um, we are going to get those renderings, we're going to gather some more of that information, and we are going down that path on the pool, and that's why it's so tough for me, I'm a proponent of both, and I'm working on both. Um, and then I think what we could do as well in that process, that John mentioned, I can have, uh, Brandy come and run down the numbers, and specifically talk about, uh, the PPACG grant as well, and take a hard look at both, um, and, and be able to take a look at the facts as they stand, but we don't have to decide it tonight.
Well, and, uh, you know, the whole other thing that's kind of not even been talked about yet is Southmore Drive, um, and where, you know, those grant monies are with that, and you guys are making weird googly eyes at each other.
We just had a meeting on that, uh, four o'clock today, as a matter of fact.
Oh, okay. Um, so, yeah, I don't know, I, you know, I, for me, it's, it's, it's really about what, what drives these decisions, and it should be our strategic plan, and something that, that we really have been pushing, and, and have committed to the community, that's how we're going to make our decisions, and, um, I think leaving this table, at least for now, and, um, see where the strategic plan flushes out, and then, you know, if next council says, that was a great idea, we really want to commit funds in whatever that looks like, that's easily attainable, um, that's just, again, me, if someone wants to make a motion, and different- That's just, again, me, if someone wants to make a motion, different to that, we can do that, but that's just on this part. And so I don't, I don't want to move past this part yet unless everyone feels like they've been heard and.
True.
And move from there. So I, you know, I, again, I, you know, I'm, I'm half, I've been using this term today. I don't know why I get through these things. Six of one, half a dozen of the other on the pool, honestly. I grew up in a community that didn't have a pool and everyone did just fine without it. There was the hopes of a pool, just like a theater at one point. I remember that was a big talk, um, growing up and neither one happened and, and people moved on with life just as it is. And, you know, I, I like the idea of a pool and, and those sort of things, but again, that's just a lot of money outside of our strategic plan to be pushing forward. And when I, we have needs that we get complaints about all the time.
So do we have a consensus that?
I don't know what the consensus is yet on that.
Like was suggested?
I think we revisit it. I'm for, I'm with Sam. Let's come back. It doesn't have to be done tonight. See if it aligns with the strategic plan and what the next council wants to do.
Is there something we can do if that's the consensus that brings it back? Not just we talk about, hey, we'll bring it back and it never happens.
True.
Yeah, is there something we can do that, that forces?
You're still going to be in a situation where you're going to have to spend that money or there's going to be some, some, something's going to be needed for that money.
Yeah.
So can't we at that point say, hey, are we going to spend it here or are we going to spend it there?
Well, I think for me, it's.
Is what I'm trying to say. So if we decide.
Yeah, we will, we will ensure we'll put it on a future agenda, let's say before the end of the year and have some decent.
Well, I think it's got to be after the strategic plan is done. If this isn't a goal or a priority on the strategic plan and we're going to commit money to something that's not in our direction, then what's the point of doing a strategic plan?
So we're looking at 60 days on that. So we'll make sure we use that timeline and bring it back, make sure we have good presentations on any of the concepts that have come up and give you good information to make that decision.
Staff can work that in the strategic objectives. And that's the, the point of the objectives are the deliverables, the way that the city supports the strategic priorities. So the, the discussion of the resourcing and a suggestion on what to do with these funds can be built right into the development of the strategic objectives, which will be presented to council.
Yeah, we'll make it part of that conversation.
And then any changes that would happen financially after that meeting, we would bring to you by resolution and, you know, similar to a supplemental.
It could even be included in the planned strategic objectives, the entire strategy is adopted by resolution of the council.
And we'll use that timeline to make sure we, to make sure we take care of your concern, mayor, that it, that it will be brought back up and involved in that conversation. We'll even invite you back. See?
Okay, I can make a motion with the 50,000.
Okay, well, this is still a public hearing, so I want to make sure.
Oh, okay.
I think we're, we're at a point for that piece of it. I know Ms. Thompson at the last or during a work session brought up the beacon unit is that, that's settled to take care of?
Yeah, so that's $100,000 revenue coming in and $100,000.
For the one year. It's just that, that commitment past that that we have to figure out.
Right.
But that gives us a year to figure that out.
I would add that to the first reading adjustments that you'll see when I come back for the second reading. I'm also adding the 50,000 to streets per your suggestion. And so that will also be in that adjustment line.
Okay.
Okay, it's a public hearing. Anybody else?
I wasn't trying to start. I know, but I'm saying, I would tell you this, sitting on the parking advisory board
For the last how many years, Ms. Sylvia?
At least four.
Four. Board wants a pool, wants a rec center. That's what they want. They're, we've been looking, working and trying to get that. We want one and we want to improve it. The Fountain Valley area needs a pool, rec center for everybody because our community is only growing and getting bigger. So I know the desires out there. I'm just worried about where the, you know, the dollar amount. But the park and advisory boards had numerous conversations and presentations on how to get to that point. And we're trying to figure out a way in that. So it's, it's, it's deep in there in the heart of most people in the community. You know, it's just, it's a, it's a, sometimes there's a bridge too far or you got to figure out how to get to that point, you know? And it's hard to do. You've been doing it for 30 years. I've only been here for a small time in the community, been on the park advisory board. And I've seen a lot of progress made in the last four years. I think it'll get done. I'm just not sure how we get it done and where we go to get all the money. But I think, you know, I just think it's a little bit about money. But we want it just as much as Ms. Thompson and everybody else here. We want that pool. We want that rec center for our community.
Okay, and well, and hopefully it rises. It rises on the park strategic plan. Parks and Recs was one of our main four objectives, you know, in, in moving forward with that last strategic plan. So as I think about where we're headed, I think it's, it's going to be up there. It's just, then I think it's, you know, I'm kind of all over the place. The council's responsibility to ensure that when they set these budgets together and that they stay true to that plan and, because then what's the point? So anybody else? Obviously a discussion that will continue. Have Mr. Applegate and Ms. Duncan with lights on? Is that for motions and such?
Yeah.
I don't know. I have, I just had, I had a question about the survey that we did. I, I don't know if this is appropriate time to ask it, but are, when are we going to get the results from the survey?
The street survey? Or?
The unofficial survey that we had online? I do have those numbers. I can send those out to city council right now. It was very specific to programming within an aquatic facility. So what type of programming you would like to see there? That's kind of just the start of information gathering that we need to do. But I can definitely send that out to you.
Okay.
Anything else? It's a time to do it.
So I'm Rick Clementson. I was on the committee when we were doing the, you know, the rec center. And we were on a roll and we had a lot of things projected. We were going and we were on our way and then all at once COVID hit and then the whole bottom sunk out. But we had deals, we were going to have a, a thing to put it on the, on the ballot for a, for a, for a mill levy and, and so forth. And then everything dropped out and now we're back to square one again. And I mean, we've got to pick this up and we got to show that we are concerned about this and that we're in this, not talking about it, but let's do something about it. I mean, if it means putting up some money, let's do it. Let's show our community that our city is committed to doing this. That's my, my point on this is we got to show them that we're doing something.
All right. Thank you for that. And, you know, I think, again, the commitment from those people, including yourself and that we're on there, the commitment that we put staff time towards doing this, it's there. But as we all know, life happens and then other things take precedence, which is unfortunate. Other things to think about as well, I think Whitefield is pretty much out of the conversation. They've, they've gone on and done their own thing and so that, that's a major partner.
They have gone on and done their thing, but it's like, kind of like this thing where it's not happening right now like they thought it was going to happen.
Well, but I, and I, and I still question how fully invested they were in it anyway. And so, you know, they, they wanted us to bail them out really and they didn't want to have to do any of the work. And so, you know, and of course, our local school district and the Y just decided to take matters in their own hands and that's a whole nother discussion. So anyway, I get it. And.
It's more than that.
No, but we had, there was five of them.
There were six.
Yeah, but we lost half the partners, so we do have to.
We, we lost part of the partners, so you do have to kind of go back and figure out your numbers and what you're going to do again when, when that situation happens, so.
And, you know, again, I think through COVID and, and other things and, you know, priorities have changed for some people and, and I don't know. It's a discussion not to end, obviously, so. Okay, so with that, I'm going to go ahead and close our public hearing. And if there's no further discussion from council, Mr. Applegate?
All right. I move to approve on first reading ordinance number 1769 as written with an addition of 50,000 for road maintenance.
And?
The $100,000 grant for beacon.
And what?
The, the $100,000 for beacon.
Oh, I thought that was in there, sorry.
No, it is not.
In the addition of the, yeah.
An addition of $100,000 for a new beacon representative.
Okay, and Mr. Geek?
I second.
Was that motion okay? Okay, good. And we have a second, please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
Okay.
Thank you, council.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lewis with all of your money stuff. Item 10, correspondence, comments, and ex officia reports. Mr. Evans?
Real quickly for everybody, our, our city paving projects are done for the year. Bob got enough asphalt and got everything completed on our list, so that's, that's the good news. As the Aspen Ranch development builds out at Link Road and Cane Ranch, we have told them that we would prefer to see Cane Ranch, or excuse me, Link Road stay open at least one lane during that entire construction. But because there is some drainage improvements that are going to be done under Link Road, Frazee Construction has gotten back with us. They don't know if that's possible, but they are going to attempt to do that. If they are not able to do that, then the same detour that occurred while we were working on the road on Cane, the dirt part of Cane up to, I think that's Shumway, over to Squirrel Creek, that will be put back in effect. But we're pushing them not to happen, but I just want to let everybody know, we've told them we need several days of notice to get the word out to the public if it's going to occur. But just batten down, that could happen again. Mr. Geek?
Are they going to pave that road east?
Yes, on Cane, not all the way out to Shumway, just up to where their, their project is. So.
That's all I need.
100 yards, something like that up Cane. And they're going to do some, some drainage improvements at Cane. As we know, when the irrigation season happens, that whole intersection gets ugly. The other thing, some good news, Kimberly briefed us this morning that the EPA Brownsfield study came back for the Lorraine piece of that project. And good news, there were no big issues on that property. So we had our fingers crossed on that. We don't have any big issues. Now, that's just done on the exterior of the school building out there, not the interior. We know we have asbestos and some other things on the interior of that. So as soon as we can get Sylvia's folks taken care of in a alternate location for parks, we'll take care of that. But there will be a, a beginning of a community engagement process that John and Kimberly will be involved in and getting public feedback about what we want to do with the future of that Lorraine location. So we'll see that, you know, beginning of year, that type of thing starting to, to take root and move forward with public engagement on that. But that EPA Brownsfield study on Lorraine was, was good news that we don't have big issues over there. Yeah, that's all I've got, mayor.
Okay, before I go to Troy, your boss wants to speak. Go ahead, Scott.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is not, by the way, the best way to participate in a council meeting. I'm getting cabin fever here after being quarantined for a couple of days, but appreciate you giving me just a minute to make a comment. Wanted to just briefly mention the trunk or treat that's coming up on the 29th. And so we've been in contact with El Paso County Health just to make sure that we're following any kind of protocols or directions that they have to help us sort of mitigate any COVID related issues. So we're, I just want to make sure that we communicate that we're on top of that, we're in close contact with them. We'll be making a few changes to the event, nothing really serious, things like spreading out the vehicles so we can get a little more separation between people, different kinds of signage. I just wanted to just briefly, for one, remind everyone that that event's coming up on the 29th. It'd be a great event and also that we're doing all we can to make it as safe as it. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Scott. Troy?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. The one thing I have for council tonight, and as some of you may be aware, well, as many of us are aware, the opioid crisis in Colorado and nationwide, the, the state has been involved through the attorney general of participating in a class action lawsuit against the pharmaceutical companies for the opioid crisis. And so they put together documents to, to basically, for local governments to join in this class action lawsuit and they're seeking participation from local governments. And so, as you look detailed through the, the, the class action lawsuit, they're seeking 95% participation across local governments and seeking that, a participation by kind of the first week of November. And so I just wanted to put that on your radar, that next week, or I'm sorry, next council meeting, I'll be, you know, presenting that idea and for some discussion about whether or not we want to participate in that class action lawsuit. And so if you have any questions or if members of the public have questions about what that looks like, you can certainly reach out to me beforehand, but I'll be presenting that next, next council. Just a heads up.
Okay, thanks. Chief Maxon, you've been so quiet over there. And you're back.
I am back. I got back at two o'clock this morning. I just want to let you all know that our new fire engine will be here next week and I'll send you all an invite tomorrow, but we're planning a ceremony where we push it into the fire station on Friday, the 22nd at 4:00 PM. And we'll invite all of our elected officials, staff, and the public to that. So I'll get to work on that tomorrow. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Did you guys take it out for a drive? Is it?
Insurance isn't under us yet, so I couldn't just yet.
Oh, okay.
But it will be soon.
Okay, great. All right, Commander?
Yes, sir, I have nothing.
All right. Mr. Truch?
Nothing additional this evening, mayor.
Okay, Mr. Lewis?
Nothing additional, thank you, mayor.
Ms. Martinez?
Nothing additional.
All right, Mr. Lavelle?
Just one quick item. I wanted to give an update on the AV improvements for this room. I know that that's been a kind of a long road, but we do have some progress to report on that. We have a vendor selected and we have a design chosen for the project. We're down to one last item with respect to the ADA portion of that for the hearing assistance system. Once we get that resolved and integrated into the design, we're prepared to put in a request for requisition and get the project started. So I hope that we'll be really close to getting that going and soon we'll see some improvements for supporting council meetings for that.
Okay. All right, thanks, Paul. And I don't know if you guys got it, but I got a phishing attempt this morning and it was from a police officer supposedly and it looked pretty legit. And I'm like, this looks a little weird. So I contacted Paul and he said, don't open it. But apparently others did. And, but we had to reset passcodes and things today. So if they don't look, if they're off a little bit, I just encourage you, Paul can get on it super fast. Like I emailed him and in less than three minutes, we had, he had me erasing it before I even opened it. So just important to make sure you're checking on those because those could cause a lot of damage in our system. Okay, Ms. Rosa? Anything? Okay, Ms. Huffman?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, Ms. Tietra?
Okay, I forgot to tell you, the Fountain Fall Vendor Fair is October 16th from 9:00 to 2:00 PM. It is at Restoration Church at 9355 Peaceful Valley Road. And that's on October the 16th. And just a quick note about the redistricting commission, they voted 11 to 1 and the plans that were adopted will be submitted to the Colorado Supreme Court on October the 15th. And the Supreme Court will reissue an opinion no later than November the 15th.[1767.56] and the Supreme Court will reissue an opinion no later than November the 15th. And I also listened via Zoom to the Pike's Peak Association of Realtors meeting, and broadband availability is how broadband allows people to live in areas that are less expensive. So, you know, that's a good thing for Fountain, since we're getting our broadband this month, and that will be useful to getting jobs in our community and working on housing availability.
Okay, all right, Mr. Geek?
Nothing from me.
Mr. Applegate?
Nothing, no.
Ms. Estes?
Something more?
Ms. Thompson?
Just wanted to give a shout out to D8 for the first responder barbecue they had last Friday. It was great to see so many of our people there, and the kids out there appreciating it and just drawing attention to you guys, so shout out to D8, the food was excellent and free. Felt, I felt really sorry for the kids working in the snack bar, though. Nobody was going over the snack bar, or anything, but, but thank you, D8.
All right, I have nothing. We do have two GID motions, or items that should take pretty quick, and so our next, no executive session tonight, our next meeting is, what is the next meeting, it's not on here? October 26th, same time, same channel. So I will adjourn our regular council meeting, and if you don't want to stay for GID, you don't have to. We're adjourned.
You have to stay for GID.
Breaker.
Do you, how much do we need, or can we?
Look, I thought you meant council.
Oh, no, council has to stay, sorry.
Well, just get up and leave.
Have fun. Thanks.
Okay. See you, Frank. Okay, I'm going to call to order the regular, or the Fountain General Improvement District Ex officio Board of Directors for District Number One, for action on the following item. Item A, Public Hearing and Resolution 21-056GID1, a resolution adopting a budget for Fountain General Improvement District Number One for fiscal year FY 2022, assessing a levy on taxable property and providing for certifying a levy to El Paso County.
Sure. John Lewis, Finance Director, Mayor Council, thank you. GID1 has assessed as a levy of 12 mils, so this resolution certifies that you are continuing the levy of 12 mils on this property. This district was created in 2007 for land annexed, and it is to create capital assets necessary for the growth areas. First 1.7 million is to be spent in life safety improvements, they have to be capital improvements, and the, the revenue will approximate, will approximate, excuse me, $159,500 for 2022. The ending fund balance will be a little over $1 million. So we haven't gotten to that 1.7 million, and there are no expenses budgeted at this time. So we're not asking for any budgeted expenses, just to continue with assessing the mill levy.
Okay, any questions on this item? It is, it is a public hearing, any questions from public?
Yes, there's none.
Closing public hearing, and what would the board like to do? Ms. Estes?
I move to approve Resolution Number 21-056GID1.
All right, Mr. Geek?
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval, please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
Okay, and then item, so we're going to adjourn as District Board Number One Board, and read adjourn as General Improvement District Number Two Board Ex officio Board of Directors for action on the following item. Item A, Public Hearing, opening a public hearing and Resolution Number 21-057GID2, a resolution adopting a budget for Fountain General Improvement District Number Two for fiscal year FY 2022, assessing levy on taxable property and providing for certifying a levy to El Paso County. Mr. Lewis?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This district was established in 2012 for general, general improvements in, in this district, and the mill levy would be assessed at 10 mils in, in this resolution, and the total revenue would be approximately $127,250. The ending fund balance will be approximately $440,000. There are no expenses budgeted, so we're asking for your approval of this resolution and the assessing of the 10 mils. By the way, both of these GIDs were included in miscellaneous funds in the first reading of the budget ordinance, and upon your approval of these resolutions, they'll also be included in the second reading. So with that, I'd like to ask approval of Resolution 21-057GID2.
Okay, questions, comments, concerns from board and/or public? No questions, council or board? Ms. Duncan?
I recommend approval of the attached Resolution Number 21-057GID2.
All right, and Mr. Geek?
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval, please vote.
Six yes, motion carried.
Okay, and we are adjourned.
Thank you, council.